Mr. Janik.
Here.
Mr. Van Truen.
We have notes from both Mr. Miller and Mr. Van Truen asking to be excused tonight. Mr. Cowher.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse both of them from tonight's meeting.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dimbinski.
Second.
There's a motion and the second to excuse both Mr. Miller and Mr. Van Truen. From the meeting tonight, they both have notes on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried five to zero. They are excused. Now, we will go to items two and three, the prayer by Chaplain Nahorn and the pledge to the flag by Sergeant at Arms.
Please join me in bowing your heads. Gracious God, we recognize that this past week marked the 77th anniversary of the attack that launched America into World War II. As President Roosevelt so aptly stated, December 7th, 1941 truly is a date which will live in infamy. Let us never forget that. During this holiday season, whether one celebrates the Christmas holiday, a different special holiday, or chooses to not participate in any holiday at this time, we may all take this opportunity to be thankful for, acknowledge, and reflect on the many blessings in our community and in our own lives. Let us never forget the less fortunate and be sure to always act in a helpful way for those we may encounter in our own lives. And now let the words of our vows and meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your vision. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to item four, the consent agenda.
Minutes of the regular council meeting held November 26th, 2018. Minutes of the Building and Finance Committee meeting held December 3rd, 2018. Minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held December 3rd, 2018.
Mr. Dimbinski.
Move to accept the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Cowher.
Second.
There's a motion and the second to accept the consent agenda as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried five to zero. The consent agenda is accepted. We'll go to next. The next item is item five, acknowledgement of the public pertaining to items on the agenda. We have a number of people that wish to comment on various items on the agenda. The first, we have two people that wish to comment on agenda item number seven A, which is in the second reading. And that is to comment on the ordinance establishing the new position in the Treasurer's Department. First, I will call on Mr. Ramsey and then I will call on Mr. John Mulcomber. Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I've done a kind of an in-depth review of our use of the CCA. Mr. Mulcomber brought some concerns forward at the last regular council meeting. So, I had some questions that I needed to answer to council members. There's a lot of information here. I'm going to try to run through it quickly for you. If I miss anything, let me know. I'll try to answer any questions if I may have missed any. And I just wanted to get this out in advance of Mr. Mulcomber's comments because maybe I may answer some questions in advance of his comments. So, bear with me. In short, my recommendation is going to be to keep using the CCA. And I'll explain why. We pay $190 each year to a software provider, not to the CCA. The software provider is to provide a secure portal for us to communicate with the CCA in order to send taxpayer information so it is not subject to, you know, the wrong people looking at it. There are laws in place to protect those taxpayers, including our local ordinances and Ohio Revised Code. And even with regard to the tax laws passed by the United States Congress, those come into play too. Everything that we do is in compliance with those laws. We've done one transmission of data to the CCA. And that was, I want to say, late last year, December of 17, I believe. What we would like to do is do this once every two or three years. And the purpose of it is to see if there is anybody that falls through the cracks that is not paying Amherst taxes when they should. And I guess we sort of view this as a duty to the taxpayers that pay to make sure that those taxpayers that don't pay are accountable for their city tax. Each transmission that we would send through the secure portal includes only names, addresses, and social security numbers. No other information. The CCA then runs that information against the records that they can access because they can access the federal records that we cannot access. And they basically see who falls out. Whoever falls out, CCA then pursues collection efforts against. Again, with regard to security, we use the portal. And I'm sure council is aware of using portals in other parts of life. They're a fairly common way nowadays to transmit information in an encrypted or secure manner, just for those kinds of reasons, for security reasons. Secondly, we follow the law, all the laws that apply. And CCA has additional laws that they would have to follow in terms of, well, there's various laws that they would have to follow, including remitting information back to us. In fact, the information that they remit back to us is extremely limited. I was trying to, Laura, I was trying to think of what exactly they sent back. I didn't have it in my notes. It was real limited. You said something like, "We don't even know who the taxpayers are," or something like that.
Yeah, when they do the, when they sort it down and identify who fell out of the list, who didn't match. We have no idea who does. That's something that they keep to themselves.
So, there's no.
The only information we give back are people that pay. And they have to bring that back to us because we have to post it to their account.
So, the information exchange is extremely limited in that regard. So far this year, and though we have got, we've got money that we expect to come in, but we didn't, we haven't accounted for that yet because it's not, we haven't received it yet. But to date, there was one remittance of $32.30 and one of 50. Our fees are $25 from those two funds. It leaves a net of $57.30. Again, we do expect more monies to come in, but we don't really have, you know, any concrete numbers on those yet. Earlier this year, the CCA sent out demand letters in response to our transmission of data that we sent. They mistakenly sent out 20 to 25 letters to people that lived in either Amherst Township or South Amherst. And this was because of, we think, a number of issues. The same zip code, same or similar street names in the different cities. And I think what actually has to happen is when they get this data, they have to go through and eliminate the people that are not, you know, living in the city of Amherst because they still get 44001. And that could be Amherst Township, that could be South Amherst. So, in response to the error, we put a notice up on our website. We had CCA send out corrective letters, I believe. We expressed our concerns to CCA in as professional terms as we could. And we, more importantly, we spoke to anybody that came in and anybody that called. And as the girls, the ladies, excuse me, typically do in the office, they treat everybody personally and well, you know. So, I think, I think that that mistake that they had made, I think, is, I hope going forward, they don't make the same mistake again. But I will say that I think that the, it is a valuable tool to have. I think it verifies our efforts to collect in other means. So, in fact, the less I think we collect through this means, the better we're looking or the better we're doing as a whole with the office. I understand that there may be some concerns about, you know, confidentiality and so forth. But that is as protected as it can be, I guess, is what I'll say. That's the end of my report.
Questions for Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Madam President. This is initiated by our offering the name, social security number, and address. How do they get other people's information? Are they expanding beyond the scope of what we're asking them to? If they made mistakes, what information were they using that created these mistakes?
Do you ladies know how to specifically answer that?
They accidentally picked up the township address, yeah. You have to really.
People that fall out that they're.
What is falling out?
The people that are not on our system that are showing up on the federal system.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't match.
I got you. I got you. So, it wasn't driven by our information? There was no?
No, it's who didn't.
They send a whole list of basically all of the taxpayers in the city. And whoever doesn't match that list, that's who they think is a nonfiler. So, they see all these people that are not in the city of Amherst but have a 44001 zip code. And they think, "Oh, they're nonfilers," when in fact, they just don't live in the city.
Okay. Am I correct, then, if I were to say that they just need to modify the parameters of their search? And this should go away or at least improve?
I think.
Is that what they're working towards?
Yeah, and it's very difficult because of two reasons. One is, there are actually duplicate addresses between us and South Amherst. The addresses are identical.
Like Lake Street?
Yeah. So, that's a real, I mean, who's to know?
44001.
I mean, it's the same address, the exact same address.
Church Street, I think, is another one.
Yeah. So, there's that difficulty. And in addition to that, it's almost a hand process. And you may have missed one or two. I do this exact same thing for the state of Ohio. We get a list, we match it. I by hand have to go through it and identify who doesn't match. And I have to look at every address. Vermillion has some of our addresses, 44001.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what is the fix then? I understand what the issue is now. Thank you for clarifying. Do we get an opportunity to preview this or do they send out a softer letter instead of so demanding upfront?
No, it gets back to the privacy thing. Just, these are kind of the parameters and I guess they're safeguards in order to protect taxpayer individual privacy.
So, every address that they have that's incorrect, we're eliminating and hopefully they've got them all eliminated at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, we ran into a small problem this time, but, you know. I think the more, the more we work with them, the more elimination possible. I mean, once you eliminate it, it's an address, it's not, it's not changing, you know. So, once they eliminate it, the next time it won't be a hit.
But if you're eliminating, say, 200 Lake Street, doesn't that work both ends then?
Sometimes.
Got you. So, all right, all right. You said it was, what, about 40 letters that went out?
We said, what, 20 to 25, I think.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Janik. So, the amount we collected was 57. I didn't hear the.
The total amount we collected was 82.30.
Eighty-two fifty?
Eighty-two thirty.
Eighty-two thirty.
Minus $25 that CCA keeps as a percentage, and we got 57.30 net.
I mean, in terms of our reputation, is it worth that little amount of money is the question I'm asking. But secondly, did they make any offer of restitution for the mistake they made in terms of maybe another year on that, you know, to balance things out, to give us a second year free?
Well, we, we only pay them, they only take it like a percentage. So, we don't, we don't really pay them anything.
I thought you said there was a $25 fee yearly.
That's what they, no, 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 no. The yearly fee that we pay is to keep the portal. It's for our software company, our software provider.
Okay.
That's the yearly fee. And that's just to, again.
So, I guess, let me ask the two of you, do you think this was worth the heaviness and the reputation issues we went through? Because this letter was very hard.
Absolutely.
It worded it very harsh, I mean. And these are good neighbors of ours in South Amherst and Amherst Township. Was it worth, is it worth that? It is.
It is because it confirms to us that we're doing a really good job of trying to get all the taxpayers on our walls. Because we have no idea, you don't realize, behind the, the different scenarios. You're not going to pick everyone up from property tax. You're not going to pick everyone up from the state of Ohio. You're not going to pick everyone up that doesn't even file either federal or state. There's a bunch of people out there that we pick up that have no connection to anything that I'm digging for, you know, looking that we can.
So, when you said they removed the ones that came back this year, and if I heard correctly, they removed them on both ends. The Amherst and the South Amherst, or they left the Amherst address in and removed the South Amherst or the Amherst Township.
They're only removing Township or.
Township or South.
Or village.
So, that doesn't remove the Amherst address. So, thank you. No further questions. Mr. Dimbinski.
Thank you. Going way back when this was first signed in 2013, and I probably remember this wrong, so I'm asking. So, this is only catching the people that have not filed, not verifying the amounts that they have filed and if they're the same. Okay. My original understanding from back then was it was both. So, it was, it was good to know that it's only those who have not filed, not verifying amounts also.
Then there's the second part of their program. We only chose to go through the first part.
Oh, okay. Maybe it was talked about then. I just misunderstood at the time. So, okay. Thank you very much. That's no further questions.
I have one question. The statement was made when I was, I met with the Treasurer's staff that we have 8,000, 8,000 separate potential filers. And there are 2,000 people who do not file, that are potentially eligible to pay income tax.
I don't think those numbers are entirely accurate. It's more like, well, I, do we, can I, I don't know, am I allowed to talk about that? Am I allowed to talk about a class of taxpayers?
Sure.
Tell me.
Statistics, sure.
Okay. It's something like, if I have it, I just had it here a second ago. I wanted to say it's around, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen probably has it, she knows the exact numbers. It's around like 700 or 600, if I recall, individual, individual taxpayers. Is that about right? And then, but, you're talking about a total number of tax years. Is that, I want to say 1,400? Was that the number? So, you know, those people may account for more than one tax year. But in terms of the total number of individuals, it's under 700?
That are still resident.
That are still residents?
Still resident, yeah.
And then there. And then there may be some that are non-residents, but we're talking about, I want to say 1,400 filings?
1,400 tax years.
Tax year filings, if you will. And what they've also expressed to me is that's actually pretty good. When, what's the range, 20,000? What's that?
Tax years.
20,000 tax years versus our 1,400, you know, we're doing okay. But, but this is one of the tools that we use to make sure that we are doing okay, so.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Ramsey? Mr. Mulcomber, would you like to go up to the, and I know you have questions, but you also, you have.
I have a lot of questions now.
You'll need to state your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is John Mulcomber. I live in the Bronx, New York. You just mentioned that there's 1,400 tax years that haven't been filed. And yet, we got involved with the CCA this year and we only had two delinquent reports come back. Why didn't those 1,400 nonfilers come back? I don't understand.
The 1,400 are the ones we've already identified. They're in our office already.
You know they're not filing?
Yes. Not everybody files their taxes and pays. I may be a misnomer. We just put that out there perfectly.
Very painful for everyone that does.
Yes, we are.
All right, so I, I'm flattered yesterday by that. And we have 1,400 here and we have a program that sends letters out to neighbors to arrest them for two claims. It's unbelievable to me. So, I just want to address something that Treasurer Ramsey said about the safe portal. I understand everybody's trying to do their best. I mean, I believe that the people here in Amherst and the people at the CCA. But if you look at that safe portal, you just said that there was 25 letters sent to township residents. They don't owe taxes to the city of Amherst. You caused their personal federal information to go to CCA. You caused their information.
That's not true, sir. That's not true.
How did they know? How did they send them?
We only.
That they were delinquent and calculate their taxes?
We, we sent a list of the names, addresses, addresses and social security numbers of the Amherst residents. They compared, they compare that against their federal records. We don't send them any federal information.
I understand you don't send them any federal information.
Well, it's just what you said.
No, what I'm saying is, the letter that went to the township resident says that they're delinquent in their taxes. The reason they know they're delinquent is because they pulled their federal record. That's, that's how they know. So, you caused 25 or 30 federal records of neighbors to be pulled to the CCA that don't owe taxes.
I think that's, that's specious reasoning.
Mr. Ramsey, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Amherst has a finite number of identifier, people, individuals. We send that to the CCA. CCA then looks at all those individuals and lines them up with the, at the time, people 440, 44001 area code, I'm sorry, zip code. And then determine, oh, these 25 people were not identified by the city of Amherst. Therefore, they must be city of Amherst taxpayers that have not filed taxes.
Correct.
And that's what they pulled in their information.
Correct.
And they pulled enough information to come up with an amount to bill that taxpayer. So, they had to look at their federal tax return to do that.
It's the CCA, not the city of Amherst.
Correct.
But the city of Amherst caused that to happen by having the steam of two administrators trying to collect the same taxes.
I just objected to causation. I don't think we caused anything.
Certainly did. We had an disagreement and you authorized the CCA to collect taxes for us.
But there's no proximity there. I mean, I feel, anyway, I don't want to.
So, here, we talked over a month ago and I asked you for records about the CCA and what we had collected. I received nothing directly to me.
Well, yeah, because you came.
A freedom of information request for what I would like here. If this is what we have to do, that's what I'll do.
No, in fact, I'm here in open council trying to answer all of these questions for you. There's nothing being hidden.
So, I have some.
In fact, I don't, I don't know why you're concerned.
Mr. Mulcomber, can, can we have a copy of that for the clerk also?
Listen, I would need my copy of that.
Is this the same, is this the same one that we got?
Take me one second. I'll make copies for everyone if you don't mind.
I will have to continue to receive copies.
If, if we could just wait a minute until she makes the copies and brings them back so that the council members, unless you wish to re, you just gave us your copy, right?
I just gave you.
Okay. Let's just wait until she comes back. Okay, Mr. Mulcomber.
So, I had, I sent to Council President a list of what I thought were relevant ordinances. I'd like to speak to those sections of the ordinance, tax ordinance.
And everyone has a copy of that.
So, there's a copy here and 19205 talks about effective date. And in 2015, we have new tax ordinances that became effective January 1st, 2016. That ordinance, Part B, also says that this new ordinance does not repeal the existing sections of Chapter 191 for any taxable year prior to 2016. The municipality shall continue to administer, honor, and endorse the income tax of the municipality under ORC 17. And this ordinance is a resolution that existed before January 1st, 2016. So, I look up here, the first ordinance I have there is 191.13. So, that would be an ordinance that was applicable to taxes before 2016, 1903, 191.13. Says all prosecutions under this chapter must be commenced within three years from the time of the offense complaint. Except in a case intended to file a return, filing a false or fraudulent return or admitting to report 25% or more of income required to be reported. In which event, the limitation of time within which prosecution must be commenced shall be six years from the date the return was due or the date the false or fraudulent return was filed. So, I would like to ask the Law Director on interpretation of that. So, I'm thinking that if we're talking about the 2010 tax year.
Okay, look, hold on. First of all, point, like, point of order here. We have something on the agenda that has nothing to do with Mr. Mulcomber's talking about. I would ask respectfully that we reconvene this conversation to allow me to look at what he's talking about. Because a legal opinion's not going to happen in 15 minutes. We have individuals here on other agenda items that are respectfully waiting to have their items taken care of. This specific item is not even on the agenda today.
No, our agenda item is whether or not council would approve adding a part-time position. The issue about what to do with CCA is not, has not come before. I just, I was just doing it as a matter of my report, you know, because that's where we were last time we were here. I told council I would get them some answers, so. Whatever the Law Director's.
And I think my, what I'm talking about here, I think ties into that request for the additional position.
Madam President, if, if I, I mean.
Are you suggesting that this go to item nine or would you like to address it at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, quite frankly. I mean, it's asking me for a legal opinion on items. First of all, I don't give legal opinions to citizens. I give legal opinions to city council administration. But if there's questions about the law, I think I should at least be given a heads up and a request to inquire and to investigate and provide some sort of guidance to the council.
That's fine. I agree. That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right.
Can I continue?
Yes, but we.
Because I believe the council can reasonably interpret what I just read. That there's a six-year statute limitation on the collection of taxes before 2016. So, if you research that and find a law, I'll accept that. But that's what it says. So, if you look at the letter that was sent out to township residents, they asked for records from 2010 and 2011 that aren't even covered on this provision, that not even covers that provision. So, not only that letter was sent to the wrong people, it was trying to enforce years that weren't even enforceable. It's unacceptable. This city's better than that. We're better than that. We need to add people to this program.
Hold on. Let me just cut to the chase on that.
I thought you wanted me to interpret.
Well, I'm going to interpret it right now. It says prosecution, first of all, you're talking about criminal prosecution. You're talking about administrative collection agency. But also talks about, shall it be six years from the date the return, return is due or the date of the fraudulent return is filed? That could mean that if I had a fraudulent filing in 2015, it could go retroactive for six years from 2015, which would, which certainly would encompass the time period in question. We're talking about information we don't know about. Because quite frankly, those individuals are private individuals. We don't know anything about their accounts. They could have had a fraudulent account or non-return that was in 2013. So, if you go six years back from there, it'd be 2007. So, if that's the issue, I don't know the specifics of these individuals. We're talking hypotheticals here. Because we weren't provided those individual letters out of pride due to respect of their privacy.
All right, what we're going to.
I understand. I understand what you're covering.
What we need to, what we need to do, Mr. Mulcomber, Mulcomber, on the recommendation of Mr. Pocora is if you have, if you wish to continue on item nine with your questions, you can do so. We, we need to go to the other items on the agenda. Are you okay with that?
No, I'm not okay at all with what's going on here. I've given the information request, and I'd like that you receive that information. I find this amazing. What we're seeing here is, when we talk about costs and benefits of this, the costs are so high, we can't even talk about it in front of council. That's what's happening here right now.
Okay. I would like to come back to this on Item 9 for you to ask the additional questions that you want as far as the follow-up from the administration. And we'll do that on Item 9 tonight.
I don't have any more questions if there's not going to be a legal one.
Okay, then we have to wait until the next meeting when he's prepared to answer those questions.
Well, I'll do respectfully. Madam President, I don't even know what the questions are. Mr. Malkumber wants to provide me a written question, so that'd be great.
I'll start with questions then. I'm not with the treasurer, trying to ask for information on the CCA, I've received nothing. So what I'm asking for, dear Mr. Ramsey, under the Ohio Open Records Law, I'm requesting a copy of public records pertaining to the city of Amherst agreement with the city pleading with Central Flex Agency. Specifically, I'm asking for the following: a copy of the latest signed agreement between the city of Amherst and the CCA; a copy of written or email directions provided by the city of Amherst to the CCA regarding the specifics of any delinquency program that may be executed for Amherst; final statements of monthly receipts from the CCA for calendar years 2016 through 2018. That's what I'm asking for.
Yes, Mr. Ramsey.
I've got no problem with the request for information. I mean, we'll deal with it like we deal with all of these sorts of requests. I have to defend myself here a little bit. You've said a couple of times that I'm not giving you information or something to that effect. You sent a letter to my office or made a communication to my office, which I followed up on. In fact, I met with you at your home. You said that you had some questions you wanted me to answer, and I told you that I would do that. You then sent a follow-up email to me saying, hey, where's this information? And I said, give me a little bit of time, we're working on, which is actually the item that's set for discussion tonight, Item 7A, I believe? And I said, as soon as we get through that, I will get everything you need back to you. Then, surprising to me, you came to council two weeks ago. That's not a problem. You're entitled to come to council. But I just thought that it changed the character of what you were asking. Now, it's not just me giving you answers, I have to give them to the whole city here on council floor, which is what I did today. I apologize if I haven't jumped through the right hoop at the right time for you, but I think I'm doing my duty to you, okay? I just wanted to say that to defend myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions on that item? Mr. Malkumber?
Last week when I was here, one councilman mentioned that he thought I was giving a one-sided view of the CCA issue. What I gave you was the potential problems with these letters being mailed to residents that don't owe taxes, the neighbors that don't owe taxes. To me, that's a cost. That's a problem. It is a one-sided view that way. I'm very opposed to this. But I also gave you the positive side, and that was a report from the CCA for three years that showed no revenue from this scheme. So I think this council should look at costs and benefits of this scheme, right? The costs are sending letters to neighbors threatening to put them in jail versus $82. I mean, it's clear. The fact that my view seems one-sided, I can't help it if there's no revenue being collected from this scheme. I can't help that. That's just the way it is.
Thank you. Any further comments on Item 7A? Thank you. Before we go to the comments on Items 6E and 7B, I would like to introduce Mrs. McCruskey, who is a guest tonight. She is the principal at Powers, no, excuse me, at St. Joseph's School, and you came and were part of the presentation on the Safe Routes to School, the public hearing that we had before this. So welcome, and we're glad to have you. Now, we have, Mr. Sean Brady would like to comment on Items 6E and 7B on the agenda. Please come up and state your name and address, Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Sean Brady, 1290 Bassett Road, West Lake, Ohio, 44145. I spoke at committee in previous meetings of council, and at this one, given the lapse of time between this meeting and the next regularly scheduled meeting in council, which is roughly thirty-some days away, we would respectfully request that council considers having a special meeting. We currently have over 100 lots that are sitting waiting for council's approval with minimal items to be done on those lots, and we'd like to expedite the timeline by having a council call, especially if that's-
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brady? Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on an item pertaining to tonight's agenda? Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will go on to Item 6, Ordinances and Resolutions. First reading. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $2,560,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving city streets by reconstructing, resurfacing, grading, draining, curving, paving, constructing storm sewers, and related drainage facilities, and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency.
We need suspension of rules on this, or not? We're going to all three of them?
There's not enough people, anyway.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Cowver?
Make a motion to pass Item 6A on to the second reading.
Thank you. Mr. Janik, second. There's a motion and a second to send Item 6A on to the second reading. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Motion passes five to zero. It is sent on, Item 6A is sent on to the second reading. Item 6B, please.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $550,000 for the purpose of paying costs of installing and improving sidewalks and declaring emergency.
Mr. Cowver?
Make a motion to pass Item 6B on to the second reading.
Mr. Winarski?
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second to send Item 6B on to the second reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item 6B is sent on to the second reading. Item 6C.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $1,015,000, $15,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving Cooper Foster Park Road from State Route 58 to Oberlin Avenue by widening, reconstructing, resurfacing, grading, draining, curving, paving, constructing storm sewers, and related drainage facilities, and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Dibinski?
Move to end, Item 6C on to the second reading.
Mr. Janik?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to send Item 6C on to the second reading. Mr. Nahorn?
Just briefly, as mentioned last meeting, this is an issue with this road that has faced us for some time, and thank the mayor and the administration for being diligent on this and moving forward, working with Lorraine as well, since it's a shared road. And so I look forward to working with the administration on completing this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nahorn. Further comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 6C is sent on to the second reading. Item 6D, please.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $1,025,000 for the purpose of refunding for debt charges savings certain of the city's outstanding various purpose bonds, Series 2006, dated March 15, 2006, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cowver?
Make a motion to pass Item 6D on to the second reading.
Mr. Dibinski?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to send Item 6D on to the second reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 6D is sent on to the second reading. We will go to, now to Item 6E.
An ordinance approving and accepting the dedicated improvements for the reserve at Corey Lake Subdivision Number 3.
Mr. Dibinski?
Move to end, send Item 6E on to the second reading.
Mr. Nahorn?
Second, please.
There's a motion and a second to send Item 6E on to the second reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
None.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. That item is sent on to the second reading. Now we go to Item 7, Ordinances and Resolutions, second reading. Item 7A, please.
An ordinance establishing the salaries and benefits of the permanent part-time tax assistant, one, and setting the pay rate, terms, and other conditions of employment and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Madam President. Real briefly here, we're in the second reading with this, and I guess we're kind of on the clock. You're coming up against the tax season, other work. We're building 200 more houses. My understanding is, when the stuff goes, the RIF, or the, what we've got going on with township, we're assuming all of the paper pushing for there for any tax, income taxes and stuff like that.
Oh, the JED.
The JED, thank you. I said JED. Thank you. I guess your workload's increasing. I guess I'd want to pull council. Do you, I personally see some wisdom in moving this thing along, getting off our docket and letting you get in the business of hiring a person. I guess with that, I'd like to ask that we suspend council rules and-
We are not able to, we don't have enough.
You don't.
We don't have enough. Yeah, we need six people.
Well, then I'm just putting that out there when we do have enough people. Let's talk about it. That's all, thank you.
All right. Mr. Dibinski?
Move to end, send Item 7A on to the third reading.
All right. Mr. Winarski?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to send Item 7A on to the third reading. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yeah.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item 7A is sent on to the third reading. We'll go to Item 7B, please.
An ordinance approving and accepting the dedicated improvements for the reserve at Beaver Creek Subdivision Phases 1 and 2, and approving the subdivision plans therefore.
Mr. Cowver?
Make a motion to pass Item 7B on to the third reading.
Mr. Dibinski?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to send Item 7B on to the third reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 7B is sent on to the third reading. We'll go on to Item 8, Ordinances and Resolutions, third reading. Item 8A, please.
An ordinance approving the 2019 interim budget and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Dibinski?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Cowver?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 6A, or 8A is adopted.
You'll be ordinance 01839.
Item 8B, please.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of software upgrades for the finance and utilities departments that are costing not to exceed $150,000.
Mr. Dibinski?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Item 8B. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 8B is adopted.
You'll be ordinance Number 01840.
We'll go on to Item 8C.
An ordinance creating within the city of Amherst, Ohio, a position for a full-time civilian administrator in the city of Amherst, Ohio Police Department, and establishing the salary, terms, and other conditions of employment.
Mr. Cowver?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Dibinski?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Item 8C. Comments or questions, please? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Dibinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowver?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. Item 8C is adopted.
You'll be ordinance 01841.
We'll go on to Item 9, Miscellaneous and Acknowledgement of the Public. Mr. Malkember, would you like to say, did you have anything additional that you would like to say?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to expand upon Mr. Malkember and Mr. Ramsey and the conversation we're having with regards to the use of the CCA, thinking it through, wouldn't, do we provide a four-digit or a five-digit zip code or a nine-digit zip code? Wouldn't a nine-digit zip code just clean all that stuff with the other municipalities or other cities? What do you think?
Not every single one of our records is coded with that, but we try to put all that information in there, but sometimes it's not, and we're not sure of CCA.
So the software doesn't-
I don't know if CCA has on the other side, because when they're filing federally, if they don't have a nine-digit zip code, they don't have it.
They might, yeah. It might be more- Because everyone has one, it's just what's in their database.
But it might be more about what they've got on their end in terms of their records. You know, we'll still send the same roster of people.
Wouldn't that be a condition of doing business with them?
Well, it would, too. I think they're just matching 44001. They have to do the same kind of store. Federally, if you didn't file it, they don't have it.
Okay, so that's something I can look into, right? Sure. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so you're asking for an action item?
Yeah, if you would, please. Just follow up if it's an option. If doing a nine-digit zip code, and that off the top of my head, other than using county records for parcels, we clean that up.
We'll ask.
Okay. And then, real briefly here, talking about using this, and it reinforces the great job they're doing, it's $190 plus $25 a return. I consider this kind of an audit of our system. That's a cheap audit. I mean, what do we pay the state to audit our books?
More than that.
Yeah, so, I guess if you're gonna, you know, $190 for an audit ain't much, so...
It is not. We pay $20,000 annually for the state to audit, so, fairly cheap.
Those are the two notions I had. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Mr. Nahorn and then Mr. Malkumber. Mr. Nahorn?
Two things, very briefly. First, thanks to the St. Joseph's School students and parents and teachers for the presentation this evening on the project, on sidewalk data before the meeting. It was very informational, very interesting, so I appreciate you coming, and thank you for the few that stayed to see the proceedings of the meeting tonight. Mr. Mokomor, really appreciate you coming. Obviously, you know, discussions are not always gonna give you the answer right away, and I appreciate you coming, I appreciate your information that you're providing, the questions that you're asking, they're all very pertinent, they're all very important to our citizens, so, you know, being an involved citizen is very important, so I appreciate that. I do have great confidence in our administration, in our treasurer, in our mayor, that we're gonna move through this positively and get answers. You know, the answers may not always be positive in that it's what we want to hear, but we're gonna get answers to these questions. May not be tonight, there are complex questions that you've asked, they're important questions, they're complex, but appreciate your questions, and I am confident in our treasurer and administration that we'll get these answers for you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Malkumber, did you want to go up and...
Do I need to, or?
Well, it's better because it'll actually, with the microphone, it'll come through.
I don't want to give the impression that I don't support our tax administration, our government, because I certainly, I just wish we would work with them 100% and not have this split. But I raise my hand to your question, Mr. Winarski, about verification zip codes and how we might do that. One of the reasons I'm a little emotional about this is because I went to the Marin County Auditor's website today, to the GIL, put in my address, and within one minute, I had my tax return up there that showed out of the city members. Within one minute, I can search an address, anybody can search an address on the GIL website and find out whether you live in a township or a city. And if we can show that next time, I'll show you that. But what I'm saying is, they sent these twenty-five letters out and didn't do basic due diligence of checking, they could check themselves in a minimal amount of time. So, when you talk about how we might check it and not have it yet, that's available for them, and I don't know why I wasn't even this time.
Thank you. Anything else? Now, one thing I would like to say is that even though you have been critical, and there's nothing wrong with being critical, I do, you and I have had a number of private discussions, and they reflect the very good things that you said about the treasurer and the treasurer's department. The conversations you've had are similar to what you just commented now, so I mean, very positive toward every, all the work that's being done, even though we've had some suggestions. And so, and I thank you for that very much. Mr. Cowherd?
Yes, in regards to putting the address in and getting that information in less than a minute, my understanding from what has been said tonight is they're duplicate addresses between South Amherst and Amherst or until it's an identical street address with an identical zip code. And if you would put one of those addresses in that have that problem, you may get multiples that come up on the county website as well.
We could test that in a couple minutes. And I'm thinking that one would say the address Church Street, Amherst, Ohio, and another one would say South Amherst.
No.
It doesn't.
No. So, you know, that's where the issue is coming, whenever there's duplicate addresses in the different cities or townships or villages, you know, 123 Main Street, 4401, there's one.
If you have an address, we need to check, I will check that.
I suggest checking the address on the letter that you provided to council that went out to one of the people. Maybe, maybe, you know, you'd get more than one that popped up there, so you would probably have an address on hand.
Find out.
Okay. Any other comments on item nine? Item 10, Agenda Requests and Committee Meeting Schedules.
I do not have any new agenda requests at this time, Madam President.
Okay. Very good. Finance, Mr. Cowherd?
No items at this time, please cancel, Madam President.
Thank you. Building and Lands, Mr. Winarski?
Nothing this time, Madam President.
Streets, Mr. Janik?
No items, please cancel.
Community Development, Mr. Nahorn?
No items, please cancel.
Executive, Mr. Nahorn?
No items, please cancel.
Ordinance, Mr. Dombinski?
No items at this time, Madam President, please cancel.
Utilities, Mr. Janik?
No items, Madam President, please cancel.
Thank you. Mr. Nahorn, recycle, Mr. Nahorn?
Please keep recycling.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Dombinski?
No items at this time, Madam President, please cancel.
Thank you. Police and Fire, Mr. Winarski?
Nothing at this time, Madam President.
Annexation, Mr. Winarski?
Nothing at this time, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We have, we do need to address the regular council meeting that would be scheduled for Christmas Eve on the 24th. Mr. Cowherd?
Like to make a motion to cancel the regular council meeting for December 24th due to the holiday.
Thank you. Mr. Dombinski?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to cancel the council meeting that's scheduled for the 24th of December. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, five to zero. That meeting on the 24th is canceled. We'll go to item 11. Mr. Brady has requested that we have a meeting before the end of the year in order to move these items on. This is the time when, if there's members of council who wish to make that motion, you may do so. Mr. Janik?
Move to have a meeting Monday, December 17th at 7:00 a.m.
Mr. Nahorn?
Second, please.
There is a motion and a second to call a special council meeting for Monday, December 17th. Comments or questions?
Would you like to state the items that will be in the agenda that evening, Mr. Janik?
I'm sorry?
State the items that will be on the agenda, I think 7B and...
All of our third reading and second reading.
6E?
The item, right, 6E on tonight's agenda, and then 7B on tonight's agenda would be considered, is that okay if I sit down?
Okay, let me ask, is there, under the comments, if you want to add, we'll add 6E and 7B specifically for that meeting, is there anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add 6A, B, C, D, and E as well.
Oh, okay, all right. So, you're asking for items, all of the items on... Okay, all, okay, with no one on council, okay. All right, let's go back, let's go back, and let's handle this. Okay, all of item, on item 6, all of the, all of the items that have been moved to the second reading on item 6A, B, C, D, and E, is that what you're saying?
Correct, Madam President.
Now, what about those items at A, B on those?
Item 7.
Okay, fine. So, all of the outstanding items we wish to consider next Monday?
Correct.
Is that, and that's a motion?
Yes.
All right, and, Mr. Winarski, did you second that?
Nahorn.
Or no, Mr. Nahorn?
Yeah.
Mr. Nahorn, all right, and you're okay with that second?
Yes.
So, we'll just consider all the items? All right, very good. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to have a special meeting on the 17th to consider all of the items that are currently, that are 6 and 7, which are the outstanding items on the agenda, all right? Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Madam President. Real quick, if we're moving items from the second reading into the third in one meeting, are we accomplishing, is the goal here to clear our docket by the end of the year? And if so, we're falling short then?
No. As long as we have at least six members here next meeting, we can...
We can suspend.
Add the emergency.
Right.
The emergency's already on them, we can suspend rules and adopt.
We can suspend rules and adopt them, then, yes.
So, that's what we're moving towards, goals?
No, no one is allowed to be absent next week because I have to be here, so...
No more questions.
All right, very good. All right, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Roll.
Yes, Roll Coho, please.
This is to have the meeting. Mr. Dombinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowherd?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Nahorn?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion can passes five to zero, and we will have a special meeting of council on Monday, the 17th at 7:00 p.m.